...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Thank you. So some minor changes to the agenda. We're going to remove item nine, the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee Report, and we're going to add an item five C, which will be Spring Presentation Dates. Are there any other additions or subjections? Good.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna, I didn't know about to introduce, but I'll report on it.
Do you want to defer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here for Citizen Speak? All right. So Superintendent, the floor is yours.
These are the meetings that everyone enjoys the most. The part of the meeting and the meetings recognizing Milton Public School students. First, I'd like to invite to the table our Milton Future Problem Solving Coaches, Nicole Loria, will you join us? Justine Novak and Tui Nguyen, and the members of the Elementary and P.S. Middle School Team, will you come up to the table, please? So no one's supposed to have favorites, but this is, everyone will tell you, Ms. Gormly's favorite program in the district. So I'm going to ask the coaches and students to describe the program to the school committee and the viewing public, and just tell about the competitions and the topics that you've participated in.
Well, thank you so much for having us. This is one of our favorite programs to be a part of also. I think I can speak for Tui and Nicole. I'm not going to bore you with going through the whole PowerPoint presentation because I certainly want you to hear from the students, but we are so fortunate here in Milton that the administration supports such a program like Future Problem Solving. It is a program, it's an academic special that teaches the students a very specific six-step process. I do believe it is something that they wholeheartedly can participate in and practice outside of the classroom, especially as they move into college and into their careers. So we are so lucky. As you can see from the presentation, it goes through a very specific step, but we can tell you a little bit about the topics that we worked on this year. And I know that when I share the topics with my friends, they are so impressed that our students are working on infectious diseases, toxic waste, philanthrocapitalism, and cloud storage. It's quite impressive.
This year, two of our Pierce Middle School teams advanced to the State Bowl, which was exciting. We had a very long day, about 12 hours together, where we competed in our six-step problem-solving process. And then their action plan, which is the last step of the process, we had to turn into a skit and performance in an hour and a half. So we were put on the spot, kind of really quick, to get our written work into a presentation to perform. And I think we all had a lot of fun doing that. It was exciting to see the students at work so hard for such a long time and maintain focus for the entire day. That was really great. At this point, I think we can have the students introduce themselves and maybe say their favorite part of the process, whether it's one of the steps, or maybe a favorite topic, and what grade. So name, grade, and favorite part.
Maybe you want to pass that mic around?
Yeah.
And Ms. Loria, you don't give yourself as a coach and the students enough credit how you had to compete at the local level to then get to Worcester. Yes?
Yeah. So we actually, we all, even at the elementary school level, had to compete at a qualifying bowl, which was held in Canton. So we first had to compete against basically all the teams in Massachusetts. And from that, that's how we were selected to the State Bowl. And a lot of our elementary school students also went on to the State Bowl to compete as individuals. So that task itself is quite hard because they have to take on the role of doing that six steps on their own instead of working as a team. So that's quite impressive, too.
Hi, I'm Victoria Lundeen. I'm Victoria Lundeen. One of my favorite parts of Future Problem Solvers is working with everyone else to solve the problem. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Glover.
My name is Neve Gilerson. I'm in fifth grade at Cunningham. And one of my favorite parts is pretty much the whole experience, but I really liked when we did the philanthrocapitalism. That was fun.
Hi, my name is Kevin Gomes. And I'm in fifth grade. I go to Tucker. My favorite part is the underlying problem because you really have to think about it and choose the correct challenge.
My name is Alyssa Ruiz. I'm fifth grade at Cunningham. And my favorite part was the action plan.
Hi, my name is Dylan Simmons. My favorite part of Future Problem Solving is the action plan because it's like, it's the part where you can really make up your own thing.
Hi, I'm Anderson Corman. I'm in eighth grade at Pierce Middle School. And my favorite part of the Future Problem Solving is working with all these diverse topics that can be applicable in a real-world scenario.
Hello, my name is Ian Lundeen. I am also a Pierce Middle School eighth grader. My favorite part is figuring out solutions for our underlying problem because you really can let creativity shine.
Hello, my name is Tucker Corman. I am a sixth grader at Pierce Middle School. And my favorite topic was infectious disease because it was very interesting.
Hi, my name is Frank Cocker. I'm sixth grade in Pierce Middle School. And my favorite topic, step, was the action plan because if you could expand on your idea.
Hi, my name is Maggie Mullin. And I'm in fifth grade. I go to Collicott Elementary School. My favorite part of Future Problem Solvers was working together as a team and learning about new topics.
Hi, my name is Hillary Sue. And I am a sixth grader from Pierce Middle School. My favorite step was the... Solutions because I could expand on my creativity and think about how things actually work.
And Ms. Novak, we had one other member just join us behind you.
No, they got her.
Oh, okay, me, okay.
Hi, my name is Zoe Guthrie. I go to school at Tucker and I'm in fifth grade. And and my favorite part was working as a team and getting to know some new people. And the competitions were really fun. And I think my favorite step was probably the challenges.
Hi, my name is Tui Nguyen. I am the coach at the Tucker School. I would like to thank you, thank Superintendent Gormly and all the principals for their continuous support. And I'd like to thank the students and their family for their hard work and time.
Member Earl.
Well, thanks for everyone coming in. I have a couple of questions. I was wondering, so how many times a year does the fifth graders compete? What's their schedule like as opposed to when you move up to sixth in middle school? Like, how different is it? And are the topics the same? But, and if they are, then is it, how does the competition differ between elementary and middle?
So from fourth to sixth grade, we are part of what's called the junior division. So if you're fourth grade, fifth grade, or sixth grade. And at the beginning of the year, regardless of what division you are in, you all receive the same four topics. They're just scored and evaluated in different groups based on those ages in the divisions.
So they all compete at the same, I call them competitions?
Yes. So we go, the first is what's called the qualifying bowl. So they have two hours once they get in, and they have, they receive their future scene, they open up their packet. So everyone, regardless of what division they're in, has a future scene. It might differ as you get older. Some students just compete right at the qualifying bowl as an individual. But in fifth grade, we have teams of four. So each elementary school has two teams of four. So we have eight students total from each elementary school. We just finished the application process right now for the fifth grade teams. And we had about 45 students apply for eight spots at each elementary school. So it is a very competitive program.
If I might add, you're not giving yourselves enough credit. When they go to Canton and to Worcester, the teams go into a room and they have a proctor from, that they don't know, who sits in the back of the room. And so these students actually open up the packet and they have to go through the process by themselves without the coach there, work together, collaborate, do the brainstorming, do the writing. And it's a very, very high-level process.
Yeah, I can add up at the middle school, too, sixth through eighth. So we're actually divided into two different categories. So the sixth graders compete in the junior division, and then seventh and eighth graders compete in the middle school division. And so we kind of run it as a club after school, and we all meet together and collaborate together. And then when we go into competition, we split into our teams. So it's a roundtable of discussions from sixth through eighth grade, and then we split the day of competition to kind of compete in those different categories. The future scene is very close from elementary school to the middle school division. There's a few less vocabulary words in there, but for the most part, they're dealing with the same research. We actually read the same topics. So whether we're in high school, middle school, or elementary school, they're reading at the same level, which is quite impressive. So the topics are actually, for me to wrap my head around, and even like the philanthrocapitalism, that was really outside of my realm this year, to wrap my head around that, and really like be able to contribute. And it's nice that we've had the district's support to pull in some folks from the outside to come talk to us. So we had a few visitors for our cloud storage topic, which was for the state. So it was really a pleasure to have those people in and experts in the field to get some information from them as well that helped us along.
I'd be interested if any of the pupils could educate me as to what philanthrocapitalism is.
So philanthrocapitalism is private donations from the wealthy individuals of certain nations. And they give to charitable companies, or, sorry, charitable foundations or other organizations that they feel a strong connection to, such as Bill Gates gives a large part of his fortune to the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And all of their money goes to helping medicines and advancements in smaller nations. So philanthrocapitalism is really just giving your personal money to help the world from just having money.
Excellent.
So we're very, very proud of you. And congratulations. And to think we have elementary and middle school students that compete at the state level. I said to Ms. Mullin, it's a resume builder, starting in the fourth grade.
I'll just, one more note, like, many of you know, we have a very successful speech and debate team up here at the high school. And I think the stuff, that and the Future Business Leaders, those are both organizations I, you know, could foresee all of you participating in. But doing something like this is such a good foundation for stuff like that because it's having to research, prepare, and, you know, basically compete against other schools on subjects, you know, like you're doing now. So that's some areas you guys might want to look into once you get up here. Yeah.
And to the three coaches, we all wouldn't have this experience without you. So, and to the three of us. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And the parents all go out to these competitions. So they deserve a big round of applause, too.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
Next, we'll call up Kristi Chapetta, our middle school, and Dr. Spalding. Will you join us at the table? On introduction of Kristi Chapetta. Kristi Chapetta works hard time and gives us 200% in the area of science at the Pierce School. You are an amazing curriculum leader, working with teachers, bringing, developing curriculum. You serve as the link between the middle and elementary. You've brought the science curriculum leaders together like they've never been brought together again. And there was a stretch of four weeks there that Kristi Chapetta spent more time in the Milton Public Schools than all of us, put together with these grants and all the opportunities they have brought to Pierce Middle School students. I'm really indebted to you. So you have one very exciting program that you're going to share tonight.
Yeah, I'm excited. We've had a lot of, actually, we've had some, a slew of exciting STEM things happening at the Pierce. And now we're going to continue through the spring with some pretty exciting opportunities for kids to get out in the field and see some other conferences and do some neat field trips. But today, I'm here to share information about a Clean Energy Day that we recently hosted at the Pierce. And we received about $9,500 from the Mass Clean Energy Council to plan and host an after-school activity day for 110 students. So what was pretty exciting was that we had 110 of our students come after school and stay from 2:30 to 6:30 to participate in hands-on activities with science teachers and listen to some really great keynote speakers from the field. So our speaker, we had three speakers that came and talked to the kids and interacted with the kids. One was Bill White, who's the senior director for Offshore Wind at Mass Clean Energy Council. The other was Michael Murphy, who's the director of water innovation. And then we had a third speaker, a woman named Katie McDonald, who is the director of Strategic Partnerships at Greentown Labs in Somerville. And she actually did an amazing presentation for the kids on her work in the field and really some examples of exciting companies that are in our area and that she's worked with internationally. But what I thought was a great message that she brought to kids was, even if you don't see yourself as a science or math person right now, she talked about how she was a theater person, and that's all she cared about in high school, until she had this experience in life that made her aware of some climate change issues. And she used that, that experience to channel her strengths. And now she is working in the STEM field, but using different skills that she has to really have an impact. And I think that was pretty exciting for some of the kids who came to the day as a risk. And sort of this wasn't necessarily maybe something they would choose to participate in, but were interested, and we had had some exciting things happening. That was a good incentive for kids to come. And I think hearing people say, "I didn't always know this is what I wanted to do," was highly motivating for them. So there are a few highlights that I think are important to share here. One is that we had 100% of our science department staff participating in the day. So all sixth grade kids had a chance to meet eighth grade science teachers and do breakout sessions with them. The whole, my whole team was there pitching in, from handing out pizza after school and t-shirts to planning and running activities. We had a great PD during the week leading up to it, where teachers were putting themselves through the activities they were going to be doing with kids, which was pretty funny to watch. We were able to share with kids the importance of following directions and not just jumping in because their teachers had had similar experiences and not been successful. And another highlight for kids was that every kid who came walked away with some pretty exciting, besides the experiences, some pretty exciting items. Thanks to the grant, we had t-shirts for everyone. We had swag bags where kids were getting water bottles and STEM kits. And they had all kinds of information on local STEM activities, the Cambridge Science Festival. That's part of the grant requirement, is that you build swag bags for the kids who participate with information on STEM resources in your area. And thanks to, thanks to the funding, we were able to put some pretty exciting things in there. Another highlight for the day was that at the, as part of the grant, they are willing to fund a field trip for all the kids who participate. And so we chose this year to use the funding to, their funding, the buses for us to take all of the participants to Mass Maritime for a day to see some of the clean energy opportunities that are there on campus. So I think for our kids, it's an especially interesting field trip because it's a place a lot of them have probably never been. Last year, we went to the Museum of Science, which was really fun. But I think this is what we've learned in our time in some of our STEM classes, that the best field trips for kids have been places that are not places we would traditionally think of as a field trip opportunity, but somewhere where they're seeing something like the Cape Cod Canal, or something like Mass Maritime, where they're really seeing STEM in the world and what it looks like and have these opportunities. So I'm especially excited. This will be a new trip for me. I've never, I've never toured the campus. And we're gonna, they're gonna get to see the windmills and all kinds of things there. So it's, that's a unique surprise, I think, for a lot of these kids. Another goal for the grant was to try to access, to include students who may not be overrepresented in the STEM fields. And so they set a goal of having 50% of your students either suits of color or girls. And we actually had 75% of our students, of our participants were girls, which made for an interesting, interesting day. Actually, we had some breakout sessions that were 100% girl groups. And I think a personal highlight for me was that you would walk into a room and the teacher would just there. They were the facilitators. They were kind of off to the side. And you would see these kids enthusiastically tackling challenges and the excitement when they, when they finished the challenge or got through things which at the beginning they thought they would never imagine doing. And you could, and I actually was talking with a teacher today who shared the change in a couple of the students after that day and their participation in science class, just this idea that they went into a room where they had to participate because that's what they were there, they were there for. And they found the success that now they're really able to go into science class and sort of take a leadership role because they feel successful and they know they can do it. So I think for me, it was just a really, personally, it was a really great day seeing our team coming together. And I think for the kids, they, when we look at our exit ticket data from the day, they all learned something new about clean energy. They all had a great time. It's funny to read the things that they liked, the STEM kits, the swag bags, the pizza. But overall, it was high reviews from all of the kids who participated.
So Superintendent Gormly took all of the words I was going to say about Kristi Chapetta and her, the impact, the visible impact that she has had on STEM at the Pierce Middle School. I was at a session earlier today, I didn't tell Kristi I was going to say this, so hopefully it'll be okay, but was at a session earlier today, which happened to be about sort of diversity and cultural competency and biases and responding to bias events and things like that. And the presenter, the sort of theme that he talked about was he said he goes around to a lot of different schools and districts, and people always say, "I'm all about diversity. I'm for diversity and inclusion." And his response to them is, "Where's your proof? Where's your evidence? What's in your wallet?" to quote. And his, his point there was, "We can say we're about inclusiveness and diversity and making, doing opportunities for kids, but how can we prove that that's what we're all about?" And Kristi Chapetta, in every aspect of her work, and she will, I will hear about this later, I'm sure, every aspect of her work is all about increasing that STEM pipeline, giving opportunities to students, making sure that every child has the opportunity to explore STEM, to try STEM out in a variety of ways, whether it's formally in the classroom, whether it's an after-school opportunity, whether it's connecting with folks in business and hearing their stories. And what we know about experiences in middle school, if you talk to folks who are in the field, who are in those STEM fields, and you ask them, "When were you inspired to go into STEM?" Most of them link it back to an experience they had when they were a middle schooler, whether it was in school or an informal science experience, but that age in their life, that's what they link it back to. And so whether it's Clean Energy Day, whether it's disaggregating data to look at subgroups, whether it's talking to children and knowing who they are by name when they walk in the door in the morning, that's the work. That's how we know that Kristi Chapetta is committed to diversity and inclusiveness for all students, in particular in the STEM fields. And I thank her for that work. I do live vicariously through her now and again. I will admit that. But want to thank her publicly for that work and for doing things and making it visible, making a presence for STEM at the Pierce Middle School, and making a presence for STEM for all students.
And I have to say, like, I'm so appreciative. I think in this district, we, I feel very supported in the work that we're doing to try to increase exposure to STEM. I think there's never been a request that I've come in or an idea where either Karen or Superintendent Gormly have sort of pitched these different things. And I feel like there's a lot of enthusiasm in this district for really making a case for STEM and really expanding opportunities here. And I think we've been able to do that a lot at the Pierce because people are so open to this issue and sort of really making it a priority here. I think it's great. It's been great for the kids, for sure.
So Member Earl.
So I got to attend for part of the activity in the afternoon. And this year's crowd was even larger than last year's crowd. And, you know, my brother Bill is one of the people who works for the agency. And another woman, Catherine Williams, is also a Milton resident. So there's a lot of enthusiasm. And, you know, I know, I got there right when the pizza was pretty much done and they were getting ready to go into the auditorium. And Bill said he had walked around and talked to some of the kids and talked a little bit about why are they here? And a few said pizza. And, but mostly, they talked about clean energy and the environment and concern about climate change. So there were a really lot of kids who were very interested. And I love the way that the staff that came and really worked so well to engage the kids. And the kids were, I mean, the participation was really spectacular, I thought. So I was very impressed with the level of interest that all of the students showed and the opportunity for them to explore sort of unique interests because, you know, certainly, my brother Bill didn't start out in science, and he has made building a career in this area. So he was a great example of that, how your interest can get piqued at certain times in your life and to explore those interests. So I thought it was great. And I loved, I love being able to sit and watch the kids and their enthusiasm for the activity, particularly after a long school day, too, you know. It was very impressive.
Thank you.
Dr. Pegg.
Just let me know when you're going on the field trip to Mass Maritime. I mean, I can't promise swag bags, but, you know, I would love to join you for part of the time there and, and see what I can do to make it a little more special.
June 5th is our scheduled field trip.
June 5th, okay, great.
So it's exciting.
I will be there, that's it.
I think we're all excited. No, and everyone on the staff is like, "Wow, we've never been there. It's a great trip."
Member Earl.
I just want to, thanks for the report and the update. And just in general, at Pierce, you know, I want to commend you and Dr. Spalding. I mean, the district as well as a whole. But I know in the years that I was on the PTO leadership at Pierce, you know, enhancing the overall science curriculum and STEM in general was a real passion. For Dr. Spalding, she's a science, a science girl at, deep down in her heart, I know, to begin with. So, but it's been, it's been great to see, I don't know, over the past five years, the STEM and the science continue to flourish. And, you know, we were lucky, again, to the citizens of Milton, that the override passed and that we didn't lose STEM teachers and that we could continue to keep the program going and hear about things that are happening like this. So that, you know, that our few, it's a big part of our future and our kids and, you know, in careers that, like they say, they haven't even invented yet by the time they graduate from college. So it's nice to hear that this is doing so well. And I commend both of you and thank you that, me on behalf of the district, that it's just getting stronger and stronger every year. So, congrats.
Superintendent.
We could have kept some of our Future Problem Solvers, this is a busy educator. Last weekend, Kristi brought students to the state science fair. So we could have kept some of our Future Problem Solvers, and you could have gotten three presentations for two. Briefly, will you share how many students you brought to the state fair, science fair?
Yes. We had, yeah, last, last weekend was the regional fair. So we brought, which was at Regis College in Wellesley. We brought five projects. So it's probably eight students came, because some of the projects had multiple students on them. And they had a great day. They, I thought, and it's interesting because they were, they were top performers at our school-wide science fair. And then we give them all kinds of feedback on their, their projects and their boards and ask them to make revisions before they go to this regional fair, which all of them did. They were sort of sending me Google Docs and edits and things. And they come after school and they work more on them to make them even more competition-ready. And they did a great job last weekend. They had some rigorous judging. And actually, we're sending two students from that fair now onto the state fair. So we're going to send Anderson Corman and Baron Clancy, who were state fair finalists. So we're gonna send Anderson, Corman, and Baron Clancy, who were state fair finalists last year, they're gonna go again this year with a totally different project on building better ventilation systems for refugee tents, actually. It's a pretty impressive project, not surprising. But overall, we had really, some really amazing projects that we brought to the regional fair. One student had worked in a lab and conducted her whole experiment in a lab, another student had studied darkling beetles. We had some design engineering projects, which we're learning how to get better at. That's sort of a new, new-ish component to science fairs, how do you do these engineering projects that are becoming a larger portion. We're learning fast how to get better at them. But they were great, they were incredible representations of the, of the district, for sure, and of our school.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I, I was thrilled to hear about the focus on pulling in underrepresented groups into the, into the STEM program and giving them a very positive experience. I think that's, that's very important. You know, a lot of the STEM field is constructive failure and learning how to deal with that and learning how to collaborate constructively in small groups. And sometimes there's, there's not enough of that out there currently. So I think building those characteristics into our budding scientists is, is critical. And, and I look forward to them coming back in, in twenty, thirty years and showing us the things that they have built and are now available for sale. It's just wonderful. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you've done.
And if I might add one more note, Ms. Varela mentioned the budget, but often we're fortunate and with the viewing public, Bill, Bill White brought Milton resident, Betty's brother, supporter of the schools, had a family move into Milton, and Ms. Williams called and she made this grant opportunity available. And again, Kristi Chapetta wrote the grant, and now is this the second or third?
This is our second year doing it.
Second year, so I would be neglect if we didn't recognize Ms. Williams. And making that opportunity available to us. Tony Cuccello and his brother in Michigan made another grant opportunity available to Kristi Chapetta. She wrote the grant, she was awarded the grant. So your initiative and to see the reality come through today, it's, tonight, it's very exciting.
It's been good, we've, we've had a lot of great grant opportunities come our way because people in the community hear about something or know about a program that's happening somewhere and they realize that they're expanding the program. And so I think that's been very fortunate for us to have people share opportunities that are out there.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of Clean Energy Day t-shirts that we'll leave in central office. They're very nice blue.
Next, we have a, a school committee member had asked for a presentation on our English learner education program. So joining us tonight is Alyssa Buchanan, our coordinator, who's worked with Janet Sheehan on this presentation for you tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to present about our English learners in the district. So I'm going to start off with a little bit of background and an overview about English learner education. So some of you are familiar with some of these laws and others, this may be new information to you, so that's why I've combined it so that there's enough information for everybody. So, we have, we're, we're required to provide ELE services to students as determined by seventy-one A, and we have a process that we follow when students come into the district. So we screen them, we will place students in sheltered English immersion classrooms. Those are classrooms with teachers who have the SEI endorsement. If you'll remember, some years back, we had multiple cohorts of teachers going through the training. And so we're obligated to place students with teachers who have the training, as well as provide support for students with an, with a teacher who provides English as a second language instruction. And the service time that we provide or support to students is determined by their proficiency levels. So we determine their proficiency by a screener when they come in, it's called the WAPT, and, or if students have been screened in another district, we receive that information and it's aligned to our screener. Parents are notified and they have to be notified on an annual basis if we're continuing services, or if students are being reclassified from support. We use a, a National Geographic curriculum that's aligned to the curriculum that was purchased for the elementary school. We've been using this for some years. It's called REACH, and the program that we use in the mainstream classes, the SEI classes, is Reach for Reading, and many of the components are similar. So the stories go along with what the stories are being read in the classroom, there is vocabu-, shared vocabulary, there are shared banks of images, and many of the digital components are similar for our program as well as the classroom program. ELE teachers administer ACCESS, which is a standardized English assessment. It's computer-based, this is our third year administering the assessment by, on comput- on the computer. ELE teachers have to receive specialized training to actually administer the assessment. Much, it's different than MCAS because the teachers have to go through an online training program that takes approximately four to five hours, and they have to receive a passing score for all of the tests that they give. And they have to receive passing scores and not only, for all of the domains of the test. So that's the multiple modalities of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And when students obtain proficiency in English as determined by ACCESS and other measures, we have to, we notify parents, but we also are obligated to monitor student progress for four years after exiting our support. So this is a, it's a, even though we're a small group of students, there's a lot of work that needs to be done paperwork-wise and also just communicating with classroom teachers and keeping track of students after they exit the program. So you may be wondering about eligibility. So we have families fill out paperwork here in the district, and there is a, a specific part of the registration paperwork called the Home Language Survey, and that's translated into a myriad of languages, and it was developed by English language education teachers along with the state, and it, when families identify that a language other than English is spoken at home by the child or the family, we are, we're obligated to screen the child for English language services. If students come into the district and they've transferred in, we do contact the sending district so that children do not need to go through an unnecessary screening if they've gone through that process in their previous district. We do contact families in regard to screenings, so we do use an app, because you might be saying, "Well, some families you, you can't communicate with." And last year, we implemented a pilot program called Talking Points, and it was mildly successful last year. And this year, the second year, now families are more accustomed to us communicating through the Talking Points app. And so we've been able to reach out to families and we've seen more feedback from families. So how that program works is, it's a computer-based app and it sends a message to families to their phones, and the families, and it sends it in their native language. Families can respond in their native language and we receive a translation on our computer at school. And it's, it's been fabulous. So we, we contact families in regard to screening. Not only, we have some families who, you know, they're coming in as, the kids are coming in as kindergartners and they've had exposure to maybe a little Spanish, maybe a little bit of French, but maybe it's just a little bit of vocabulary that they've been exposed to. We don't want them to go through a screening like this because this is not appropriate for that child. So we, we talk to families and make sure that we're, we're really being supportive of families and making sure that the children who actually need our support receive our support. So, like I said, the WAPT is the screener that we use for the, the four modalities, and language proficiency and eligibility is determined, and we notify parents through a state letter that is translated into multiple languages as well. So over the years, we've seen a great, we've seen an increase in our English language learner population. Right now, you'll see twenty sixteen and seventeen, and now seventeen, eighteen is just a little bit higher, but we keep fluctuating. And it could be because we have a transient group of students and sometimes they move in and out. When I started, seven and a half years ago, we identified forty-six students in the district, and now we're really hovering at the eighty-seven to one hun- ninety, and we're getting closer to the hundred range. This hundred is the big number for us. Once we receive a hundred students, we can receive Title III funding just for our English language education program, and it also changes some things for us. We'd need to have an ELE advisory committee for families and monthly meetings to engage our families in making sure we're going forward with the program in a way that is supportive of families and also takes into consideration families' interests, needs, and where they foresee the program should go to support their children and their families. So these are the languages of our English language learners, or English learners. We have lots of move-ins and move-outs, and every year I feel like we have more and more students who speak other languages. Milton is a place that's multilingual, we have lots of families who were very fortunate. We share, we share cultures, which is great, and language. So in order to provide service delivery to our students, we provide it based on, on students' overall scores as determined by the WAPT or the ACCESS. And the, the baseline guidelines are at least two to three periods per day of direct ESL instruction and delivered by an ESL licensed teacher. There are six teachers right now in the district, some are part-time, some are full-time, but we have English language support at all of the schools throughout the district. And based on, as the students transition through the levels, at the lower levels of, excuse me, one and two, we provide two, at least two periods a day of ESL support. As they get to a level three, we transition them to usually about one, one block a day, forty-five minutes, and then as they get higher, it's forty-five minutes and then they transition out of the program. And it looks differently based on the developmental level of the students. So at the elementary schools, it is, there's a pull-out model and a push-in model dependent upon student. When we have newcomer students, a lot of times they can't access classroom content, so we bring them to a smaller classroom and work with newcomer students, and they need longer periods of instruction. We do look to push in as much as possible, and our curriculum does align with the classroom curriculum, so it makes it easy to build the skills that the, the classroom teachers are building. At the middle school level, we have standalone classes as well as the high school. So our curriculum is aligned to the Common Core and WIDA, which is the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Standards. They're specific for English language development and English language education. We do, as often as possible, try to cooperatively teach lessons with teachers in the classroom. At times, when we have newcomer students, they're unable to ask for things, they've just come from their country, they don't know how to navigate the, the school, they don't need, they don't have basic English to be able to even navigate the school and classroom, so that the, the general ed classroom can be very overwhelming for them. So we do take into consideration students' levels of English. Our curriculum is research-based and it is multicultural in that it has stories from the cultures of our students, and it's, has nonfiction, it has fiction, it has all different genres, and it, it gets children talking about their cultures and the cultures of their friends, families. It's a really wonderful curriculum that we have. It also has sta-, little, read aloud texts, interactive videos that build vocabulary, content, and we've been able to connect to real-life information from scientists. We can look on the web and connect to the research that they've been doing, current events, and it really is just wonderful, world-based and real-life for the students. So all ELL students participate in MCAS tests that are designated for their level, their grade level. The only exception is students in their first year in the United States, they do not need to participate in the ELA MCAS. The accommodations for MCAS are, students are permitted to use word-to-word dictionaries in their native languages and word-to-word glossaries, and we provide those to the students. They're, we, you know, we, we make sure in advance that we have enough materials for the students, that they know how to access them, and that team chairs and other teachers who are involved in administering MCAS know that these are available to students. Not always do students choose to use them, but they're available for them during MCAS tests and they're prepared to use them on the tests. So the, this is the data regarding our grade three to eight ELA MCAS, and so if you look at the state, you know, we have thirteen percent of ELLs are meeting or exceeding standards, and that our district, we have seventeen percent of students who are meeting and exceeding standards right now. We still have work to do. We, I think that this year, we've, we've been able to bolster student support by having more ELL professionals in our district, and I think that by getting more professional development in the future and along with the, aligning the REACH curri-, REACH curriculum that we use along with the Reach for Reading, I think that we have aligned what we're doing now, and so that the vocabulary that we're teaching students in one context applies to the other context. When they're reading a genre, they're reading the same genre in their, their ESL class. So I hope that we'll see some improvement in those areas next year. As far as our math scores, our, the ELL subgroup at the state level is, seventeen percent of ELLs are meeting or exceeding, and we have fifty percent ELLs who are meeting or exceeding in Milton. Some of the, the discrepancy in the data between ELA and MCAS can also be attributed to, some of our students were able to keep in district and grow for many years, other students, they move in and we don't have as much time to grow their English before they take these high-stakes tests. And then in this, in science, our subgroup was very small, so we have eight percent. We can't compare it to state data because we only had a small group of students who actually participated in the science. who actually participated in the science MCAS, um, last year. Um, like I mentioned, um, our students participate in Access for ELLs. Um, a four-part assessment administered in late January and February. The teachers receive their online certification to administer the test. And it, um, it does measure the students', um, proficiency in the four modalities of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The tests are very challenging for our students. And last year, when we received some of the scores, our data showed us that, um, students had dipped in their speaking skills. And it was because they recalibrated the test, um, based on having a, we used to be able to locally score students on the speaking portion of the ACCESS, and then it went to, um, recording students and sending out the, um, the speaking data. So, then we had a dip in our scores, um, because they were looking for, they were looking for different things that we were looking for, um, as a district. And we were looking more holistically at students instead of just an on-demand, um, prompt because they didn't know the students the way that we did, locally scoring them. So, for students to transition out of support, um, we, you know, we administer the ACCESS. We determine their proficiency. We look at them as an overall student. We look at their MCAS performance. We look at work that they do in their classrooms, um, other reading and writing assessments. We get teacher input, and then we monitor a student for four years for success. Um, one thing that I failed to put in here was that we do notify parents again, um, that the students have been reclassified. So, we did go through a CPR in twenty seventeen, and there were fifteen criteria that we were evaluated on. We implemented fifteen areas, and two indicators were parcel- partially implemented, and one indicator was not implemented. And I'll tell you about what those were. So, it, the findings were that the district should assess the English proficiency of one hundred percent of the English learners. We should increase the amount of ESL instruction to ensure that students can make adequate progress. So, determining levels of instruction with consistency across the district because we didn't have, um, sometimes we've had students who move in at different points in the year, and we, we didn't always have the same professionals and the same level of support around the district only because our population fluctuates. And sometimes, we won't even know. There were two students today who, um, were potential ESL students who came into the district. And they could have affected how our service would have looked like just today. Um, I did call the sending district, and they had already been screened in their old district, and they were not, um, English language learners. But they could have, you know, it happens that it can happen on a day-to-day basis. We don't know. Um, we had to implement the curriculum with fidelity and make necessary revisions to improve student outcomes. And that the district should, um, conduct periodic evaluations of the effectiveness of the ELE program to develop students' English language skills. We were doing that, but not in the way that they wanted us to document it. So, as part of the corrective action plan, we, um, we had a goal of one hundred percent participation, um, for students in, on ACCESS. Um, we increased staffing, um, to ensure students would get, um, the recommended daily service guidelines. We, um, we wanted to document the curriculum and, and links to the overall, um, Milton Public Schools curriculum. And, um, put together a plan to biennially evaluate our ELE program. So, during this school year, the ELE curriculum, um, has been documented by the department, by our department, and aligned to standards. We participated in a formal evaluation of the ELE program. There was a document that the, um, that Desi gave us. It was a twenty-two-page document, and they asked us to go through a formalized process based on their document and gather a team and, um, come up with goals based on what we noticed in the district. And we also, we developed shared SIMS documents to assure one hundred percent participation in ACCESS. So, what we found is that sometimes students transferring in, we weren't always, we aren't always getting data that they were ELL students. So, that skewed our results on the, our participation. But we, what we did was, we tightened up our procedures. And we, um, cross-checked our information with a DRC database. And that is, um, Data Recognition Corporation, and that is the, um, the vendor that we use for the ACCESS test. And it, we have gone through data validation processes, and we look at, um, we look at every single piece of student data to ensure that it's correct. So, we look at every student and make sure that every field has been, um, has been filled in correctly. And then, also this year, what we did was, I went through every single field, and then I had each ELL teacher sit next to me and go through every single field again to make, to ensure that we were able to, um, assure one hundred percent participation. So, what are our successes? Um, at Milton High School, the, um, the English language education teacher has started a parent university. There are stu- we have students who are very successful at Milton High School and who are going on to study in college. And we have found that the families, even though we have wonderful programs to involve families and how to fill out financial aid forms and, um, you know, how to go on college visits and all the processes that, um, mainstream, mostly monolingual students go through, um, to be able to get to college, our students, we found last year, weren't accessing that information. And they're fa- and so, that near this time last year, we had lots of families scrambling to get together paperwork. Um, and they just were unfamiliar with the process. And so, we were very close to not having some of our students, um, get into the college of their choice only because some families were unfamiliar with what they needed to do. So, the high school teacher, Elaine Chung, she put together a parent university on Saturdays, and she invited parents in, and she has helped families through the process of, you know, filling out paperwork, um, assisting with seeing the global picture. What does a financial pa- aid package look like? How do you use that information to make the best decision for your family and your child? And what is being financially responsible as a, a student? What does that mean? And, um, just going through the whole process with the families and supporting students and, and their families. So, that's been a really wonderful program that, um, she started this year, and that I believe that she'll continue and expand on next year. We implemented the Talking Points Communication App. When families, um, typically, our families, even though we're emailing documents and we're, um, providing portals for families, our, the families that we work with, they need printouts. They need us to, um, to have different ways in which to communicate information so that they can engage with the schools in the same way. Um, they are unable to call in their child absent. They, um, can't do some of the things that we expect families to do that are very kind of everyday typical tasks. Through the Talking Points App, parents are able to send us a quick text. They're, "My child is sick today." "They have a dentist appointment." You know, normal things that just come up in life. "I'm sick today. I cannot drive my child to school." You know, things that just happen. Um, it has been really a wonderful way to be able to communicate with families. I had, at Collicott, one hundred perc- well, Collicott and Cunningham, one hundred percent participation in parent-teacher conferences in the fall due to the implementation of Talking Points. You know, our families are unable to, um, they can't access Google, um, forums. They can't access even Sign Up Genius. So, w- we, as a team, we go into the Sign Up Geniuses of all the teachers, and we have to align parent-teacher conferences and line up when, um, back-to-back when, if parents have multiple siblings at a school. And so, we assist the classroom teachers in making sure that these, um, that these really important meetings happen. And we also set up translators if, um, they're needed or interpretation of important documents if the parents have indicated on, on the home language survey. Um, this year, we documented the ELE curriculum. Took us a very long time, but we're proud of the work that we did. And through the use of Talking Points, we've in- increased student participation in CAS classes, extracurricular activities beyond the Bell programs, and other programs that the, um, schools are offering. So, just when we thought we were in a place where we could kind of relax, um, there's new legislation. Excuse me. So, the LOOK Act, the Act Relative to Language Opportunity for our kids, um, was passed in December of twenty seventeen. The focus is on our English language learner population and improving teaching to raise achievement levels for our students. And it allows for some program flexibility in service delivery and model. Um, this is mainly for higher-incidence districts who have bilingual programs and have, um, twenty-five, um, same-age students in the same grade. Um, they can advocate to, um, have a teacher and have instruction in their native language along with, um, English as a second language provided. We don't fall into that category because we're a low-incidence district, and we do not have, um, twenty-five children at the same, um, grade, um, level. So, at the, at this point in time, we don't fall into that category. Um, but, we do, um, there's some changes to parent notification timelines. Right now, we have thirty days from the time that students enter the Milton Public Schools in which to notify parents. So, going forward, we have ten days. So, the screenings need to be set up immediately. We need to contact families right away, um, set in motion, making sure that, you know, teachers, children participate in the, um, you know, in our, in our screeners, and that we make sure that we are, um, notifying parents in a language that they understand. If we have a hundred ELLs in SIMS, we are, um, required to establish an English learner, um, parent advisory council. We do not have a hundred right now, but we are getting closer. Um, and I anticipate that, you know, within the next few years, we'll have a hundred. And we may, you know, within the next year or two, instead of waiting for a hundred, maybe we start the process um, to engage our families, and so that when that time comes, we already have an established group of families who are already leading, um, leading the charge and showing us where they would like our program to go rather than us being behind. It also, um, establishes new English proficiency benchmarks. Um, by August this year, we'll have new benchmarks for, um, English language education. And we will have, um, we'll have required growth proficiency as determined by ACCESS, which we do not have at the current time. So, the LOOK Act al- LOOK, excuse me, the LOOK Act also establishes a seal of biliteracy. And so, beginning in twenty eighteen, nineteen, um, graduating seniors who meet graduation requirements of two fifty or higher on, um, ELA MCAS demonstrate high level of attainment of two fifty or higher on a comparable standardized test. Um, so that could be our advanced placement test in another language. So, for Spanish, it could be for Latin, it could be, um, for programs that we already have. But if we have students who would like to demonstrate proficiency on a language that we do not have in the district, um, we are, the students can, they can put together a portfolio assessment, and the district will have to determine a ru- a rubric, put together a rubric for low-incidence languages. ACCESS does not can, is not, um, is not used to determine the seal of biliteracy for English. We, the TOEFL would be an acceptable, um, equivalent exam for them. And, so that seal would go on the student's diploma when they graduate. It establishes, um, a bilingual education endorsement. So, this is new licensure requirements for core academic teachers who have English language learners in a two-way program. So, this actually affects us because the licensure requirements way affect French immersion teachers and only the French por- portion of the French immersion program. So, um, we have some English language learners who are in our program who, when they get to first grade, they opt to go into French immersion. And they're opting out of English language support, um, for first grade and second grade because they have no English instruction in their, uh, in their day. When they go to French immersion in third grade, they can receive ESL support, and their teachers, the French immersion teachers, will then be required to have this two-way licensure requirement. There will be a grandfather, um, there'll be a grandfather clause, and they're still trying to figure out what that will be. So, we see, foresee some of the next steps in our department to provide additional professional development opportunities for our staff. As our student population grows, our needs change, and our teachers need additional support. Even our ELL teachers need support. We need support with refugee students. We need support in, um, you know, supporting students through traumatic situations that they've been in. Um, we have lots of children who are coming with parts of their family and not everyone in their family. They're living with family members they've never known before. There's, there's lots of things that the kids are going through that we need some training on as a, as a, as an ELE staff but also in our larger population. We need more opportunities to expand and engage our English language education families. We really need to support these families. We have really wonderful, committed students and families who are doing great work. And they're not always engaging in our schools. And we're missing a chance to enrich, um, the lives of all of our students by investing in these families. So, going forward, I think we need to think about additional ways to engage them um, in non-traditional ways. So, some of the things that we do occur during the school day, and some of the times that we traditionally meet with families, the families that I work with, they're unavailable. And it's not because they're not dedicated to their children and they're not committed to their children's education. They're just, they, they don't have the flexibility of a work schedule, um, to be able to take a day off. I mean, they're not being paid for their work for that day, so, um, you know, ways that we can think about engaging families. I have meetings before school, seven forty-five, when I, um, talk to families about their students', um, scores on ACCESS and do, I have a PowerPoint presentation, and I have books that I give the kids for summer reading. I have lots of families who attend. It's before school, at seven forty-five, they, families come, they're able to meet, they can drop their kids off, and then they can go to work. So, I think we also need to expand communication and translations in the languages of our families. And I think that, you know, engaging and thinking about engaging families for all sorts of opportunities. You know, I was in a very powerful diversity committee meeting, um, this past month about ex- You know, I was in a very powerful diversity committee meeting this past month about expanding opportunities to everybody in our community and making sure that everybody feels as though there is a place for them in our town and that the way that we set up our programs looks, is for success for all. And I think that we need to do more outreach too, to the support systems in our town to provide translations for our families so that everyone can engage in what we do. So, these are just some of the kids in our program. Some elementary students, that's at Collycott and Cunningham and Glover. And then, those are students doing Google Classroom at the high school. And then, this is at the middle school and doing their presentations. They were writing essays. So, our students are really wonderful, their families are, you know, really great people and, you know, we're fortunate that we've figured out ways like that. You know, people ask me all the time, "How many languages do you speak?" And I say, "You know, I, I know a few, I know a few languages, but I, I don't speak everybody's language, but I know how to communicate." And we've figured out ways to communicate with our families. So, I hope that maybe through expanding professional development, that maybe we can inspire teachers in the Milton Public Schools, not just our department, to, to get better at communicating with linguistically diverse families. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cricket?
First of all, thank you for a very thorough presentation on aspects of the ELL program that I wasn't aware of, so, and I should be. So, that's great. I just had, had a question and for, and also thank you for the amazing work you're clearly doing. Uh, this, you know, it's, it's amazing that in the math, MCAS math, we're at fifty percent versus seventeen percent overall for the state. But, did you say that only ELA is exempt in the first year? So, somebody who's at Level One entering still has to take the math MCAS in their first year?
They do.
And we still have fifty percent. That's, that's, that's remarkable. And thanks for keeping up with all those laws.
So, it was I, yes, I asked Mary to have you come. Thank you so much for presenting on this important, important topic. I've been taking a lot of coursework around sheltered English immersion and it's a really important topic and really the families and, I've always worked with English learners my whole life as a preschool educator, but this, this year in particular, I'm seeing a different lens around it. And, and it's such an important population and particularly to make them feel welcome and, and to find ways to communicate with them and it seems to me like you're really making a lot of strides. And I love the whole high school thing and I think if you do think about making that advocacy group at the younger levels, there's a way to bridge that then up to that level for the, for the high school. You already have experience with that, with the teacher that's helping the parents at the high school. So, I just had two questions. So, are all educators in Milton required to have the Sheltered English Immersion endorsement?
So, we had, there were three years that we had a cohort of, of teachers who were required to participate in SEI training. So, those were teachers who had an ELL student in their class and the state paid for a seat for them in a, a Sheltered English Immersion, you know, the coursework in order to gain the endorsement. So, those teachers came first before other teachers were given seats. And then, we were given, through relationships that we established with the department, we were given additional courses because we had locations to host, we could open up if there were extra seats to regional folks. So, we, we were able to get more people in our district trained through that initiative than we had anticipated. So, since then, educators have one year from the time that they have an ELL student in their, come through the door of their classroom in which to gain the SEI endorsement. And the funding has already, you know, been, been liquidated, they've used all of it up. So, teachers are required to seek out that training and get that training on their own if they have an ELL student come into their classroom.
And what if, what if they're just a teacher and there's no ELL student in their classroom?
Then they're, they do not, well, depending upon if they're, if they have an initial license, if they're going to be able to, you know, go to a professional license, they have to gain the SEI endorsement. But, for, for teachers who have had the, a professional license, who do not have an ELL student in their classroom, they don't need to take the SEI endorsement until they do get an ELL student in their class.
One of the things that I, that I took away from the class that I was taking is that the success of English learners depends on, like, there are two elements for educators, so that is their own professional growth and professional collaboration. So, the idea that you as, as a district are responsible for all those students, whether they are in your class or they are not and whether, so, and that you are supporting the ESL teachers in that instruction. And that is the, those practices are the best success for English language learners. So, I think it's a worth, whether you have them in your class or not, it, the techniques that you learn as an educator are effective for all students. So, it's wonderful if you can, if they do it, so.
They are. We're, we are fortunate that we have a lot of teachers who have the endorsement. We've even had ELL teachers in our department go through the SEI training so that they could know the strategies that the classroom teachers were gaining. Um, one thing I forgot to mention is that, you know, in our team of ELL teachers, we have teachers who are, who are immigrants themselves, who've gone through ESL as student, as children. We have, you know, we have multilingual folks on our team. We have people who, you know, have gone through the immigration process with a spouse or themselves. So, we're able to support families in very different ways than somewhat typical teachers and that, but the teachers on our team, they do seek out professional opportunities to learn even more to support the students.
I know that some of the teachers actually teach the class because one of the teachers that I work with took the class this semester with Milton educators. Well, thank you so much for all your work. It's really fantastic.
Thank you.
Member Osmond.
I want to thank you also for your presentation and for your leadership on this important area on the district and you're clearly working with families who really benefit from the supports that your, you and your staff are providing. A couple of comments, questions, one around the EL Parent Advisory Council and with, you know, that you have to do it once you get to a hundred. And I would just encourage you to start it now if you can. I mean, you're, you're close. And I just think that the, the advantages for both the program and the participating parents and the other parents as a benefit of their participation, that it's sort of a win-win. You know, I'm sure it would take more time, which is scarce, but I, I just think that there's, there's real advantage to, to doing that and, and I don't see why you should wait. The other question that I had was around the biliteracy seal that, that kids get on their search, on their graduation, on their diplomas. And just wondering about our French immersion kids, I mean, is that something that would apply to them?
I think that, I'm not sure if the DLP exam that they already take would apply to it. That would, would have to get it approved by the state and would have to talk to them about which, they haven't right now released which tests they would accept. And they'll, they'll obviously be some test, new test vendors that will come up for low incidence languages that will, so, this will be something that we'll have to talk about with the state. And they're really still trying to come up with all of the guidelines right now because it's so new. And to release the information, they were just saying like, at any state meeting, they keep talking about the seal of biliteracy to be able to, you know, get the information out to as many stakeholders as possible because it will affect, you know, budgets, you'll have to have some sort of, you know, costs, a little bit of money to have a seal and if you want a special medal for the students or a certificate that, that will be required to, for low income and English language learners, pay fees for their, for them to participate in these tests if they choose to, you know, partake in, in trying to gain the seal of biliteracy. And this is new for us. This is brand new for Massachusetts. California has it, we're the second state in the country. And it just gives our students a competitive leg up on other students. It just says that, you know, for our students, it says that their level of English is high enough and it does not require them to participate in basic English classes when they go to, to college because sometimes they're still required to take English classes even though they've passed the TOEFL or even though they've gone through, you know, years of very rigorous English instruction here in Milton. So, we want to ensure that our students' time isn't wasted, you know, they're, they're well-prepared and we want to make sure that, you know, if that seal is on it, it speaks volumes to colleges and also employers.
Hi, um, the presentation was excellent. I'm very impressed. I just was wondering, I work at an elementary school and this is something that we, we struggle with. So, when you have, working with a, a young student who's learning English and you're beginning to sort of wonder that there might be a, a special education issue as well as the language development, how do you, what are your next steps for proceeding with working with special ed teachers and how do you deliver services if a child has multiple needs like that?
So, usually when kids come into the district, parents will notify us and parents will let us know almost immediately that their child has a learning difference and that they noticed from the time that they were young and they may have been coming from their home country to the United States for the education of their child. We did have a student who came to Cunningham who, you know, needed, who was an English language learner and a special education student and we gave him the support as, per the guidelines, as well as all of his SED services. And all of us work as a team in any case that overlaps special ed and ELL. And then, we also write these, it's not an ed plan for ESL students because we're not held to, you know, a legal document of an ed plan, but we do write these little, it's like a narrative, but it's a, it's a learning plan for students. And so, we, whenever we go to an IEP meeting, we'll prepare narratives for parents and we'll get them translated if needed to be able to support what the SED professionals have found through testing or what we've found through, you know, our access testing. But, we work together and we work as a team with parents, we have interpreters in and we, we really empower families to feel that they, you know, sometimes just based on our culture, we may not advocate in the same way for our children. So, we teach families that, yes, you can call a meeting, that this is not, you're not putting us out, like, this is what you, we want to do for the children and that this is, we're required to do this for your family, you're not making us do anything special. So, we help to educate the parents through the process also. And one other component that I think we've started to be better at is that through the process of working with special ed and interpreters, we have some professionals who haven't worked with families as a team. So, sometimes a sister or a brother may speak for the mother or, and so, as if, we are being more, we're being, we've gained more cultural proficiency to be able to embrace families in whomever they choose as the, as the representative of the family to speak for the child. And so, we've done a lot of work around working with interpreters, how to support families based on their background and their culture. Yeah, but it's, it's, we're still learning through the process.
So, I had a couple of questions. I know it's hard given our diverse linguistic population and the diverse age and our low number of students, but on average, how long do pupils spend in the ELE support system before they graduate into that four-year period?
So, when I started, we didn't have a screening for kindergarten students. So, we wouldn't even catch the kids until almost like the middle of kindergarten or end of kindergarten. So, when we started the kindergarten screening process, we're able to get kids at a young age and get them out early. So, usually between third and fourth grade, they have just a three or four years when they're younger. As we get them at an older age, depending upon how much English background they come with, they need more time. But, you should know that, like, even our students in the French immersion program, like, for any language, it takes about seven years, seven to ten years to really become a literate person in your other language. But, depending upon if, we have some students who are very, very strong in their native languages and they're able to transfer that knowledge over to their second language. And so, the process is actually shorter for those students. But, for some that come with trauma, they, they haven't been in school as long, depending upon if there've been war or other situations, they haven't been ready to learn. So, we have to, we have to do a lot of back work. So, it could be as long as six or seven years depending upon what students' needs are. But, we really don't have longevity of our ELL students. We really, we give it to them in big doses, right, when we get them and then we push them along through because we want them to access everything that the students here access because if they have two English classes, that takes up a big bulk of their time and they can't have, they can't have specials, they can't have electives, they can't, so, and we don't want that. We want kids to be able to participate in, in every opportunity that they can, so.
And a related question, but to ensure that you're getting the resources that you need, have, have you noticed that with our changing linguistic diversity in town, that that is affecting the duration of services or the intensity of services that you need to provide, i.e. our, our now growing population of non, let's say, non-European language speakers require more resources than previously or is it, is it similar to previous where it's essentially a, a one-to-one translation and you just need the resources to keep up with the enrollment numbers? Does that make sense?
So, I think it's enrollment, but I also think that our students are coming with a background that we haven't had in the past. So, there is a population of students that are called SCIF or SLIF and they're students with interrupted formal education. And they may not have had access in their, in their, in their home country to education. They may have had a medical issue that prohibited them from going to school and there weren't tutors that were able to go to their home. They were only able to go to school for four hours a day in this, in the culture that they lived in. So, those students, when they come in, they, they can appear as though they are special education students. Some may look at students that way and say, "No, no, no, they're, they're a special education student, an ELL student." So, that's where an interview comes in. We have interviews with students and families and we try and get as much background knowledge so that we're able to really gain a larger picture. And we spend a lot of time digging to get student records because sometimes they'll just come with bits and pieces. So, we're getting more refugee students. We're getting students with, we have students who are being detained upon entrance to the United States and then, then they'll be released. So, then they'll have an interruption in their education. So, we have students who are going through a lot of situations that we haven't had in the past.
Take your time, you're doing an excellent job. You've been on the spot for it.
While Alyssa takes her.
Longer than anybody tonight.
You can see how fortunate we are to, if you can, and leading this program and advocating for these children and educating the rest of the Milton Public Schools.
And, and so, thank you because that, that's a very informative answer to me because I want to make sure that when we, when we, when I go out to advocate for resources for you and we're asked a question, that it's, it's not, it's not the language difference, it's the culture and that, you know, it's, that, that tends to be more need-intensive. That's, that's, that's. It's, that that tends to be more need-intensive. That's that's the, that's one of the changes you're seeing in the in the demographic.
But there have been, Milton Soccer in particular was really wonderful. It had some new students who've come and who were unable to navigate even the internet registration and they were really wonderful in helping to get students who love soccer and who really want to play the game in, on the fields in Milton. So I'm grateful to Milton Soccer for their outreach.
Yes. And last question, similar vein. When we hit the hundred-student threshold, do we encumber any additional administrative costs or requirements beyond the the advisory council or is that is that really the the main difference once we hit that threshold?
Well, it's, it strains the program because the, we end up spending a lot of time on paperwork and tracking students because as the, it's not just the hundred students. So we see it as, okay, we have a hundred ELL students, but we may have forty or fifty former ELL students that were required to gain paperwork and tracking on and monitoring for four years. So that's a part of it that becomes labor-intensive for teachers. So if, you know, going forward, there was someone to be able to assist with generating parent notification letters and assisting with, you know, scheduling screenings or parent-teacher conferences, you know, in a, in an ideal world, if we were able to have something like that, that would be wonderful, but that's, you know, that's, I don't know that that would exist, but there are administrative challenges that will happen as we continue to grow.
But that, and that's more of a function of the overall growth. It's not when you hit a hundred, all of a sudden there are ten more forms the state gives you and.
No, no.
So it's.
No, it's just the expansion of that we have more and more students and families and lots of other work that we need to do.
Yes, and it's excellent work that you are doing it. Thank you very much. Wonderful job.
Very briefly, today is National Administrative Assistant Day. We've had celebrations across the town. Tomorrow night is the Milton High School Cabaret and in each student presentation, there'll be a surprise faculty member. Saturday night is MFE Celebration for Education. Monday is the Milton Pierce Middle School Golf Tournament, a first, at Granite Link to raise money for middle school sports. And on May first, which is, uh, May first, uh, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Is Milton Summer Enrichment, a day that Milton Public School families, they actually requested that the registration open at noon time and not five when they're traveling home so they can competitively sign up and get their children into the courses of their choice in the Milton Summer Enrichment. And our next school committee is Tuesday night.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Excuse me.
Mason, right?
Wednesday. Thank you, sorry.
So I was looking for the attachment for your updated goals and I don't think I see it in the packet unless my packet was.
Yeah, I didn't see it either.
So they they are, they are done, they are updated. So we'll table that for our next meeting and update, vote on the updated goals at that time, if that works for everybody. I'm going to move to reappoint en masse our subcommittees and advisory committees and devolved responsibilities, et cetera, today so that we can continue to do work on them in the, over the next few days. But this is, this is now the opportunity, if people want to move around, if they want to be on a new subcommittee or advisory committee or or change things around, I would, I would love to have that feedback from you. So if you wouldn't mind sending me updated preferences, if you have any, maybe by, not the first meeting of May, but by the second meeting of May, we'll try and get an updated roster for the advisory and subcommittee, subcommittees, if that works for everybody.
By when did you say?
The second meeting in May.
Okay.
So that's three or four, three weeks from now. Yes.
So you want people to send, so that's not next Wednesday, but I don't know when the next meeting is, sometime after town meeting?
I do.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. So, um, but with the thought that you wouldn't actually be changing the membership until after the school year ends, right?
Sure, yeah.
I'm just saying, that doesn't make any sense to change anything before the school year ends. Because Health and Wellness, Advisory Committee, Traffic.
Yeah.
Advisory Committee, all of those things run until June or May and then there's a natural break with summer. Some things continue, but it would make sense to me that we wouldn't make any change until the school year ends.
That that I think makes a lot of sense, but it would be helpful to know.
Yeah, no, no, of course, yeah.
If if people want to move around, that they could then start attending those meetings, those advisory meetings, those subcommittee meetings and and, you know, so that when they join them over the summer, there's not a ramp-up process, i.e. if I wanted to be on Health and Wellness, I could start attending those. And, um, you have to, you have to speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, so when, when do, so I, just looking, so we meet the sixteenth and then do we meet the thirty, I don't have it in front of me, do we, do we meet the thirtieth or do, when do we meet in June?
I, so.
June sixth.
June sixth, okay.
So, yeah, so does, May have, May has five Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Is that how many works out?
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long, yeah.
Right. So I don't, we do not meet that fifth Wednesday in May.
All right.
Um, we just have two me, two scheduled meetings in May.
Okay.
Patricia Giller every night there.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Ark.
Yeah. I'm, I just was wondering if, like I agree, like I think we should all finish out the school year on the subcommittees and the advisory committees, but may maybe give us, just to that June meeting to.
Sure.
To ponder, discuss amongst ourselves, like if us, you know, if you want to change committees or someone wants to new-chair one or, just because it's so hectic in the next two weeks, like, I don't know, I just want a little more time to like think about, you know, next year and what we have to accomplish and maybe what we all want to do.
Great.
Does that make sense? Is that okay with you all?
So June sixth?
Yeah, like just a couple more weeks to, because we're all going to finish this one out as is and then, and like to your point, if, you know, if you're interested and you don't even know yet, maybe you want to attend to Health and Wellness or you want to go to whatever, you might be able to go and see whether you think you, if you've had an inkling that you mean you want to do that one or, you know, I don't know, just think like a little more time to figure out the next year.
I think it's a great idea.
Is that okay?
So why don't we endeavor to have people's selections in by the sixth and we'll plan on voting on the twentieth or that that second June meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If we move that around.
Yeah.
Good, all right.
So we still have to vote, sorry. We interrupted you.
Yes, so, so I would still like to vote on our, we vote our current, um, array so that we don't run afoul of our policies. So I'll, I'll move approval of the current advisory committees and subcommittees as listed before you.
Second. Okay.
Any more discussion? Yes, Members, Mary?
Um, I did have, there's one person who is a new member of the Strategic Planning Committee that's not on here.
Okay.
Michelle Cruiser, who we just wanted to.
So I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll move approval as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? You need to have us.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So on the topic of scheduling, so we we had been talking about a spring series of meetings with the the community, PTOs, to discuss the enrollment issues, space issues and the budget. Our tentative dates were at the beginning of this upcoming week, Monday, the thirtieth, Tuesday, the first. And those dates will need to be used for some of our administrative interviewing process. So if you could please contact the Superintendent with new dates that work for people's schedule so we can try and get that done in in May. Or early June.
So, so would we look either like the week of the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, right?
Probably. I would anticipate that a after-town meeting would be a good time to do it.
And can I ask, um, Superintendent Gorley, is, is, if we look at the district-wide calendar, does Charlene have everything updated with ev, you know, like with everything that we are, you know, I won't say required, but a lot of the things that that we have to go, like between boosters, awards, you know, is it already all over there?
They get on there for.
Right, everything wrong, okay.
Months, I think.
Just to take a look at that, just to look for dates, okay?
Yeah, you're going to bump into a lot those last, that week of the twenty-first, twenty-eighth, you're not, you're not going to find any days.
Yeah.
But I could be wrong.
So, I mean, maybe in June, but.
You're not going to be home, so.
I know, I know.
It'll be out every night.
And on that subject, we will be in session at town meeting on the floor in case we need to deliberate.
Sure.
I I don't anticipate there are any issues that we'll need to to meet before town meeting to discuss, but if there are, I will, I will give you, you know, due notice so that we can arrive early and discuss those issues. So. All right. Thank you all. Uh, so I'll turn it over to our finance subcommittee.
This will be the shortest report of the evening. You can all thank me later. I'd like to move to approve vendor warrant number forty-two dated April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. So ends the finance subcommittee report.
That was remarkable.
It was really great, Lee.
All right. Policy.
All right, so this evening before you, you have two policies. We'll start with policy I, J, N, D, B. I really do want to meet the person.
I know. Just second that, just second that.
Who is responsible for this naming of the policies. This is called the Milton Public School Internet Acceptable Use Policy. This is a re- reconfigured policy slightly from the one that we approved a long time ago. Original adoption of this policy was in January of two thousand and five. So now with our one-to-one happening hopefully in September at the high school, we need to really think about how we educate parents and students and everyone involved about how the internet acceptable use policy. So that is what this policy is. The two changes that you see are in red in the policy and essentially refer to the fact that all students will be provided a Milton Public School, MiltonPS.org, network login ID and password that that will be exclusively theirs and that they will use for all the work they are doing in school and things that they will be submitting to their teachers. So in other words, they're not going to log on to the Gmail, their own Gmail. So that's the first thing. And then the next paragraph says that all Milton Public Schools, again MiltonPS.org email and other internet files and records may be accessed and examined by administrators. This refers to only those records, files associated with the MiltonPS.org email, okay? Just like our MiltonPS.org emails are accessible by administrators, so shall all of these for students. Then it just goes on to reiterate some of the things that have always been in place about, you know, responsibility, about ways you should and shouldn't act on the internet, about it. So, you know, it's access to outside sources and how you need to be careful and all that stuff. So this is just a first reading of the policy, but this is a really, 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 to use three reallys, important policy because it's going to affect, the parents need to understand and students need to understand this policy because we are going to use the internet more and more in school in every way for learning. So please read it and if you have any questions, bring them to our next meeting so we can discuss them. A.J. Melison has come to many policy meetings at the crack of dawn to discuss these policies with us.
Mm-hmm.
So, does anyone have any questions right now about the internet acceptable use policy? No?
Do you remember, um, I know we talked about this with A.J. about how this would be communicated with parents?
Yes.
Um, is it just part of the student handbook and parents are expected to read it there or is it something separate?
So it will be part of the, when they sign the, um, their, the disclaimer, they disclaimer at the back of the handbook, but this is part of the things that they have read and understood. But we discussed with A.J. that he will be going to PTO meetings and he will be presenting an evening for parents to come and to learn more about our digital policies and about our di- our digital citizenship expectations for the district. We discussed this morning briefly, a policy that Katie Greer is coming as part of the speaker series, parent speaker series, and she's going to be talking about the internet and all of that stuff. Um, that's happening, I think, in, um, in June, you know, which is not a great time for, to like sort of tap into people's brain power because everyone's really tired by then, but we can bounce that off. You know, she can broach some of those topics with us and then maybe in the fall, there's another parent, there's another speaker that parents have suggested around this topic that can come in. But in the fall, A.J. is planning to have a full-on outreach to parents about this. And he's working with a high school student to write this policy to be user-friendly for young students. Because at the elementary level in K to two, the teachers log on for the students, but from three to five, the students have their own, the same network ID and they can log on. So they're going to create a, a, this kind of policy that is more understandable for younger students because this is kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of education that's going to go around all of our wonderful new initiatives and I think it's one, I think it'll be fun, great, and I just think we, parents need to, you know, be aware and be, and make themselves available if they can to come. And A.J. has a tendency to tape and videotape things and he makes them available on the, on the, on the internet, so that'll probably be part of the education process in the fall. Videos available for parents.
To, and just for, to further, Margaret, I, I'm really excited that, you know, he's just done such remarkable work and moving forward on this, so like as, as, you know, as we know, at Si, um, at the high school being one-to-one and then, you know, Pearson. But again, the whole internet use and digital use is not going to go away and I think that he's been just great, um, working with us so that, you know, putting these policies together and being willing to go out, like, you know, as I always say, and we have to collaborate with parents over the heads, like you need to pay attention to this, along with Margaret's, you know, between the handbook and that, that they really need to understand because, you know, when these things come up about how, how kids are using it and if they're violated, you know, what, what our policy is, what, what the laws are, that the kids understand, the parents understand, because I think in, you know, in the recent past, we've had miscommunication about what, you know, what is allowed, what is acceptable, what's right, what's wrong. So I think that we're doing good work to try to stay ahead of that or up, up to speed with it. And just for the viewing audience to know that, um, even though we live in such a, you know, ongoing digital society even with kids, um, the, the, these policy, um, rules and regulations there, they're not clear-cut. They're sort of ever-changing. I mean, we've worked with our legal, um, our legal team and even that this, it's not, there's not like a, a law, like the hands-down, so it's kind of evolving. We're staying on top of what other districts are doing and are not doing. So I commend Margaret for the, leading us on this and A.J. for all the work he's done. He's been marvelous, so just to let people know and to pay attention because forthcoming there'll be lots of info about it.
So or not.
No, and it's, this is one of those topics where, you know, there are general tenets. Be careful of strangers. Don't cheat. Be nice to people.
Well, that's the other policy.
When you, um, when you, when you start to put it into words, it becomes very difficult and, you know, so it's very hard.
No, but there is a policy actually that he's working on that we have to adopt and basically.
I felt like saying like, well, they can okay that, but it's gonna still be a lot of gray area. What does that mean by being, yeah, be nice?
Be nice.
This could be nice in the digital world.
The other policy for a first reading this evening, it's called the Social Networking Policy of the Non-Public Schools. It's I, J, N, D, D. This policy is really geared towards staff and Member Rosemary, who's on the policy committee, has multiple times suggested to us that. committee, has, um, multiple times suggested to us that we think about a social networking policy that applies to students. We haven't gotten there yet, um, because, uh, again, we're trying to get through the things that we sort of need to get through, uh, in order to make, uh, the rollout go more smoothly, but this policy, we did reapprove in, um, a, uh, in November of two thousand seventeen, which was only months ago, maybe it feels like a lifetime ago, uh, but it was only months ago. But we, we put it out there again, because we are, again, you know, having a lot of new, um, digital initiatives, we just want this one to be, um, reviewed and considered by the, um, school committee, and then it, it is part of, and will, becomes part of, information that is given to new staff upon hire, and information that is reviewed yearly with staff. And it really addresses certain things, because, for instance, in the world that we live in, everyone uses their cellphone, and teachers are really supposed to communicate with students only through, um, you know, their MiltonPS, um, email, but there are certain ways, you know, they might use a text messaging system to say, uh, you know, I don't know, banned practice is happening and not happening, there's a lightning storm, that sort of thing. So it sort of outlines those things in this policy, and the acceptable ways that that can be done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the issue becomes that all communications between, uh, you know, teachers and their students can be o, a public record, and then if you're using your cellphone, or you're using your personal information, then that can be, get tangled up in a public record request, so that's why these policies are put in place. It's not really trying to dictate what people do, it's really just trying to help them be aware of, um, things.
So I was just wondering, does Milton Public Schools, do they give, um, cellphones to administrators, to principals that are like, um, district cellphones that the principals can use for these kinds of issues?
It, it's, so, um, James, Jet, the principals, the vice principals, they carry, they carry us, that they communicate with one another.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, yes, and they can communicate, um, with families through those.
Okay.
Yeah, so, these are just two policies for our first readings, and we can, we'll be discussing them again at a, a next school meeting. There will be, I'm really s, um, I think someone else should probably chair the policy committee next year. I'm really sorry, there's been a lot of policies this year, because M.A.S.C., like, put a lot of stuff out there, and we just sort of hopped on it, and then with the new initiatives, it's just sort of been a rolling ever, ever, seems like every time we have a policy meeting, we add another policy. And I thank Charlene Rocher all her help and support in this endeavor, it's been a lot of work for her, plus the state changed a lot of things with regard to employment policies, the Commonwealth, so, um, I just really appreciate all of her support, and, um, everyone's support in this initiative.
Thank you. And again, you've done, excuse me, you've done a wonderful job this past year.
It's a great committee.
It's an unremitting treadmill, I feel like a little hamster on a wheel sometimes, um, just unable to get out of your own way with all the stuff the state puts at you, and, and the stuff that you want to do kind of gets off to the side, so.
Yeah, we got lost, there's nothing.
Thank you, um, to you and to everybody on the subcommittee.
Sheila and Eva. All right.
All right, uh, speaking of Sheila, transportation.
Okay, so I just only have a brief update, um, but, and I'm going to reach out to, um, Member White, who attended, um, tonight was a busy night at Doc, as you know, at Doc Tony, and I got sworn in at six, and at the same time that downstairs, at town hall, at the same time downstairs, that townwide traffic commission, that is important for us to get, to present our issues to, to be able to move forward. So, um, we, we only met, I already gave an update, so we basically just met Monday night to sort of talk about and speak about, you know, what we were going to present tonight to the traffic commission, townwide traffic commission. Um, so I'm going to ask if, um, Betty would, uh, she was there, um, I only came in at the end, so if she wouldn't mind just updating, um, the feedback that we got, we'll have, we'll, we'll probably discuss it, um, flesh out a bit more at the May meeting, because we, yeah, we just had the, what's technically the April, but maybe just for a quick update about, you know, what, uh, the initial feedback, and then we can hopefully have a, a more concrete update in May.
So just briefly, the Glover School, Karen McDevitt, the principal of Glover School, presented the traffic concerns around, um, arrival and dismissal, and the fact that it presents a lot of concern for student safety, um, and basically, we're told by the traffic commission that, you know, we don't really qualify for any kind of a four-way stop sign or traffic light, um, because the traffic is only an issue from eight-thirty in the morning until nine-fifteen, and then a dismissal, it's not a, a long, it, it has to be more of a longer standing issue for that spot, and basically, they, they thought that the four-way stop sign would be, um, make, make the situation worse, because it would back up traffic. There's a huge amount of traffic on Brook Road, like, ten thousand vehicles per day, where I think they, if I remember correctly, the data from Canton Avenue was only like two thousand vehicles a day, so there's a huge discrepancy, and so we didn't really have much success with that idea, but they did, um, talk about re-meeting around the parking situation, and trying to look at the parking lot beside the Glover that's, I think, controlled by the town and/or park commission, and whether or not there might be a way to look at that again as a way of alleviating the traffic patterns to make it for safer arrival and dismissal. And then, um, the principal of the Tucker, Elaine came, and so did, um, Libby Dumphy, I forget her last name.
Yep.
Um, they came and talked about the Tucker issues, and again, I think one of the issues is that the, um, Mass DOT is looking at the entire Blue Hill Avenue, um, traffic situation and coming up with, um, a plan for the entire street, and I think that the comments and data close at the end of the month of April, so there's still, that's like, a work in progress still. And that, they're, certainly they are going to, um, bring emphasis to the issues of Tucker School in that e, area, but they're, from the, um, from the Blue Hill Parkway area, they were talking a lot about, um, bumping out the sidewalks as part of maybe that, um, s- street initiative that they're doing right now, so it could make it a little safer for students to cross, they could see things. They talked about a couple issues of, like, painting, and so that people will be clearly able to see that there's no parking in certain areas. So they did, they did seem to resp, be more responsive to some of the things that they have control over in the Tucker neighborhood, and things that are part of the, um, the DOT issue, so it's, it's very complicated, as you know. So I, I did feel like the Tucker felt, people felt that they were heard. I think, you know, the Glover thing was a little bit more frustrating, because, I mean, that's a really worrisome, um, spot with all the traffic, and, you know, the long-term issue is that as our elementary population is getting larger, that problem is not going to be going away, that problem is going to, is here to stay.
Can I ask Betty, um, I, I think that unfortunately, I think that unfortunately at our meetings, the recommendation of the four-way stop sign, um, at that Canton and Brook crossroad, um, a, another big reason for it was because, because of the overcrow, again, the overcrowding and people parking and dropping off, as we've talked about, people are parking up along, um, Milton Academy Field on Canton, and ha, having a bunch of these kids try to cross that, and it's just, you know, I, I had seen it once or twice, and even myself, I was like, oh my goodness gracious. But, but at least, even though they said no to that, that I was glad that, um, they admitted that because they can't do that, they need to face the bigger issue of, of getting together and starting to work together as a town. You know, what, what I've come up, I've come across is be, as, as these adv, these issues come up on the Transportation Advisory Committee for the school, is that in order to approve a lot of things, we, we have to work with other ti, town officials, so I was really grateful that both Principal McDavid and Principal, um, Jemai McNeil, you know, were there because, and with the parent representatives, because I think them hearing what we've been discussing, and that, that they, it's definitely a concern, and, you know, safety concern, that the town's going to have to work together to, to make those, to alleviate those safety issues that are going to come, uh, going to continue to mushroom if we don't make improvements. So, I, I was, I was glad that at least they understood and heard that this, this Glover congestion and buildup is not going to go away unless something, I mean, we're doing our other things with, like I say, we're doing the survey to try to encourage more people to take the bus, maybe do some carpooling, um, you know, that, that, they're putting that together to, to have it go out before the end of the year, so it'll all gather the da, the data, and maybe try to push that out over the summer, but-
The other thing is that they forgot to mention is they, they did, uh, talk to, um, the principal of Tucker, Elaine, about talking to the folks who live on Oak Street, or is it Oak Road? I, Oak Street. The neighbors, because they, they were going to see if they could actually put a do-not-enter during those times of, of school pickup and drop-off, but they wanted to make sure that they weren't going to, like, really inconvenience in a significant way the neighbors, um, and they were just going to do a little outreach to the neighbors to see if they were okay with that, and they were going to try to implement that quickly. So that was one of the things, and because she has a relationship with most of those neighbors already, they were, you know, encouraging her to take a look at that and see if then they could put that in place. It's sort of informally in place now, and they actually wanted to make it a more formal, um, situation.
And, um, I'm sure this was discussed, but putting in a traffic light at the, um, Brook Road, Canton Ave intersection, that is flashing yellow, Brook Road, and a flashing red Canton Ave, so that the status quo for most of the day, and then switches to a four-way stop during school time, that, that was not, that was a non-starter as well. I mean, lights are expensive, but, yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, personally, I don't understand why we can't have a light that turns on from eight o'clock in the morning till nine fifteen, and then turns back on at three o'clock till quarter four, or whatever the timeframe is, and then it just shuts off. I mean, or, I don't know why we can't have something like, short-term-
Yeah.
-for, for safety.
Just for those times.
That's what it is, but I guess no. But, you know.
We, I, yeah, well, maybe we can ask at the, at the May meeting to talk about that a little bit further, or even just revisit the light, that, you know, that they would only have it when we talk further with everyone, you know, about the overall conditions.
Yeah. Because that would give you the, the four-way stop effect-
Yeah, exactly.
-at that time, and then it would be unchanged for the rest of the day.
Exactly, that's what we, we were thinking, so, um, but I at least, I was at least, um, I feel like by presenting to them, even though they, they, they can okay, like, a short-term recommendation, they are aware that progress needs to be made on improving it, because there's a lot of parties that need to participate.
Great, thank you. Um, it, it is definitely an iterative process with multiple different parties, so. Right, I'm going to move to approve the minutes of March twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
One second.
I'll give everybody a few moments to look at them.
Could I, um-
Yes.
Make a change?
Yeah, please.
On page three, um, the second paragraph, the one that, uh, under District Improvement Goal Number Four, the second paragraph, it's, that begins Ms. Gormley, um, the set, the next sentence is, Dr. Craig had asked about the enhance and improve language, I would like enhance and improve in quotes, please.
Okay.
And in the next line, um, could be attributed directly, I would like the word directly added to technology improvement, it's just for clarification.
All right. Now, I'll accept those as friendly amendments. So all in favor of the minutes as amended? Unanimous, thank you very much. Old business, now we don't have any. Citizens speak topic response, none at the moment. Next meeting agenda items, so in the upcoming, um, May and June meetings, we have class rank, uh, we have curriculum update, uh, strategic plan, I think, is penciled in for five, five-two. Um, is there anything else that anyone else would like to? All right, well, if something comes to mind, please email the superintendent.
We're meeting on the sixteenth, you'll have a brief meeting first on school choice.
Okay. That's our school, okay.
To like make the, have the vote.
Yeah. All right, you all.
Great.
Good.
Now, I remember policies coming down.
Is that school, Dr. Tony, is that, is the school coming? Is the private school coming at all, or not?
Uh, I, there was some-
Did they email?
There was some intermittent contact in, um, in March, so we'll, we'll have to, we'll, we'll follow up with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I-
All right, just wondering.
Citizens speak, somebody here. So I'm going to move to go into executive session, the purpose of which is to approve minutes, not to return to open session.
One second.
Second. All in favor?
I'm a little over.
That's right, so, yes. Member White, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Member Rosemary.
Yes.
Dr. Craighead.
Yes.
Member Brever.
Yep.
Member Vrella.
Yep.
Dr. Tony, yes. Thank you very much, we adjourn into executive session, not to return to open session.